This conference will now be recorded.
We're starting.
Can anyone hear me? Yes, okay, good, good. It's now seven thirty. Hopefully no echo. We have a hamish?
Yeah.
Okay, seven thirty, this is the January twenty first, two thousand and twenty one work session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who's joining us via video and teleconference. We ask that you please mute your device at this time so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be several opportunities for the public to be heard tonight, and we will advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meeting Act announcement.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. Meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and have been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Great, and Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Sure. Councilwoman Homan?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso?
Here.
Councilman Strauss?
Here.
Councilwoman Wosinski?
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein?
Here, thank you, Michelle. So, a public comment, this is the first of three opportunities tonight for the public to comment. Anyone for the public wishing to speak, please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to address the governing body. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at this time? Not seeing anyone or hearing anyone, I'll close the meeting to the public now. Administration, we will move on to the administration part of the work session, we'll start with the agenda review, and we have a light agenda tonight. The minutes of the two thousand and twenty sign dye and twenty twenty one reorganization meetings will be listed on the February eleventh agenda, so we are not approving those minutes. There are also no ordinances being introduced or adopted tonight. There are six resolutions listed on the consent agenda for approval. The first one, twenty one sixty five, to approve the bill list. The bill list has been reviewed, I looked at it, Matt, Amy?
I looked at it.
Okay, great, thank you. And next is twenty one sixty six, authorize a refund for two thousand and twenty tax overpayments for various properties. As you know, this is a routine, a routine resolution to refund property owners when we receive an overpayment on their taxes. The next is twenty dash sixty seven, to amend the two thousand and twenty one Teamsters local number eleven salaries. This resolution amends the approval given at our reorg meeting to include DPW crew chief's salary. So just an amendment to a prior resolution that we approved. Next is twenty one dash sixty eight, resignation of a regular crossing guard and appoint that person as a relief crossing guard, so Howard, Howard Frankel, who was a regular crossing guard, has resigned from his regularly scheduled, from his position as a regularly scheduled crossing guard, but he's asked to stay on as in an as needed capacity. So that's what Resolution twenty one dash sixty eight does. And then the companion one, the next one after that is twenty one sixty nine, to appoint regular crossing guard Margaret and Dermanto. So she's going to be replacing Mr. Frankel at the regular post. And I want, on behalf of the borough, to thank Mr. Frankel and Ms. Dermanto for their service to the borough in those capacities. Next is twenty one dash seventy, to approve the interlocal agreement for two thousand and twenty one Well Baby Clinic Borough of Waldwick. So we are renewing our interlocal agreement with Waldwick. They're the lead agency to provide certain well child services as needed to infants and preschoolers as mandated by the state. So we thank Waldwick for that, to be the lead agency, and we are renewing that agreement. And also, at the end of our regular session, we will be authorizing a closed session via Resolution twenty dash seventy one to discuss two twenty, two thirty West Crescent Avenue contract negotiation update, updates. As in the past, no formal action will be taken during closed session. And for those that don't want to stay, we're closed to the public, we come back, we don't have any formal action when we come back. We literally come back, we go back to a regular session, and then we, we end the meeting. So before the closed session, there's really nothing beyond that to, to stay for. So that was the agenda, any questions to council members, any questions about the agenda? No, everyone's good, thank you. So let's start with our committee reports. Councilman O'Connell, would you like to give your report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you.
OEM, we talked about the cases are rising a bit, so we want to tell everyone to keep practicing social distancing, wear your masks, wash your hands. More on public safety, we have some signages going up in town, some street signs. And we discussed with the police department and the fire department their twenty one budget, seeing if we can cut that a little more than they had submitted already. And our calls to date are six hundred and ninety six calls to headquarters. Nine one one calls are, is a hundred and three, fire department calls is six, and evac calls are twenty five. That's all I have now, Mayor, thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Sasso, would you like to give your report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So the land use committee met yesterday morning at eight o'clock, and then the land use board met at seven thirty last night. I would just again like to thank Mayor Bernstein for reappointing me to the land use committee and to the land use board. I think between the fact that I was a class four citizen in municipality since two thousand and nine, and then class three council liaison to the planning board since, I'm going to go back five or six years now. I'm very grateful, I'm in a good spot, I love, I love working on land use board. I think after the mayor and council is probably the most important organization in the borough. So we, we had a meeting yesterday, we set our priorities for the year, we talked about construction code. We're always looking to update and amend any code that is difficult or outdated. And we're looking at some other things, we're always very focused on property maintenance, and that's it.
Thank you, and yeah, I just want to, I want to reiterate, and, and you're, you're welcome, it's, it's mutual. I thank you for the job you've done there, and I, as I said at the land use board meeting last night, you know, you really, you've done an exceptional job there. You, you've looked at our ordinances and you've tried to, you know, look at it not only as a resident, but as a council member, as a, as the eyes of a business owner, you really brought a good, you've been a good anchor in, in that, in that department. So I appreciate all of your, all of the hard work there.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Homan, would you like to give your report?
Hi, everybody. Thank you, Mayor, for keeping me on water and sewer, there's a lot to do. We had a committee meeting yesterday, an official one, and the system is in good shape with the exception that we've experienced some water main breaks, most recently right now. Currently, we're dealing with one by Walgreens, but that's unfortunately to be expected as we kind of have these warmer days, colder days, that can be challenging on the, the pipes. Thanks to Lane and to Jeff Pickenich for managing our water use. You all remember that we had to go a hundred percent on Suez bulk water after the storm. And so I had feared we would really be up over fifty thousand dollars in overages for water. But actually, we're going to end up somewhere, we don't have the final, final numbers, but under twenty thousand, which is, which is great. And that really is in, to be credited to Lane and to Jeff Pickenich working together to ensure that they could manage all of our wells and our water needs. So thank you to them. And we had a meeting with Suez reviewing PFOs treatment options that they are undertaking in other Suez-owned facilities that have groundwater wells. It was great, it was helpful to our team. We had, you know, on there, a lot of their individuals, their engineers, their water quality individuals, the individuals that are in charge of New Jersey, as well as all of Suez. And they shared a lot of their thoughts, and I feel good that we're progressing in the right direction as we are taking the next step of doing a bid for the design and permitting for the proposed PFOs treatment plant at New Street. We also continue the legwork to produce a request for proposal to explore the opportunity to sell the Allendale system. This has been discussed as a potential option during my public meetings, and it's important that we explore this option as a potential future step. I do plan to continue to have public water meetings to discuss this and other water items of interest. My thoughts are, and no specific date, but we'll make sure it's out there, that we'll have another public water meeting in mid-February. And it's important, you know, just to remind residents that they understand Allendale water and the options that we need to evaluate in the future. So thank you so much to my water committee because I'm surprised sometimes that Lane, Ron, Steve, Mike, Alyssa, and Ari answer my texts and my phone calls during the day when I, sometimes it's multiple times because I'm trying to, you know, move one of these steps along. So thank you so much for continuing to put a hundred percent in for our borough. And that's it.
Great, and Councilwoman Homan, you thanking me for appointing you is ironic, I couldn't give that committee away to anyone there. There'd be a mutiny.
Everybody loves water!
No, but so, thank you, thank you for loving it and for the work that you do. Councilwoman Wosinski, would you like to give your report?
Yes, I will, and our water is very, very important, so Liz, you are doing a wonderful job with that. So we really have to keep on top of that, and I appreciate all the time that you put in. So I would like to update you on facilities, because I am back on facilities. Two twenty, two thirty, we are currently working with our insurance company. We, as I've mentioned in the past, we put in a claim for a part of the cleanup. And as typical of insurance companies, they're asking for lots of documents. So we are in the process of providing them with all the information they need so we could have coverage and we could finish up the cleanup. We are starting to number crunch now with our, with our municipal building. We are actually going to be hiring a construction manager on our behalf who's going to be, you know, kind of like a watchdog for, for the borough, just looking over our shoulder, number crunching with us, just to make sure that we're all right in the, you know, in the same ballpark. So that should be, on our next meeting, we will have him on there, his actual name is Chuck Tatosian, he's an Allendale resident. He was also on the planning board for many years, and he was also very involved in the school expansion, so he's very well versed. He has a lot of background in construction management, and he's going to be a great addition to the team. Last night, the land use board approved via resolution the project. So I would just like to thank all the land use board members again, and congratulations to all the new officers on the land use board. We are still going through all the documents, and they are starting to move along, and hopefully the financial agreement will be the next that'll be on our agenda because we do have to introduce that as an ordinance, and that is our pilot, so that'll be great to get that buttoned up. So we were working frivolously with that, and all of our experts and our lawyers are back and forth with all of these documents. Crestwood Lake, this year, we are going to have some more improvements that we have with the grant. There is going to be some shrubbery and some improvements around the band shell. And hopefully we'll get our bands back going this year, and we'll get to do a nice grand opening with the band shell, which unfortunately we couldn't do last year. I've already had the nerds approach me, and another band approached me, so they're already thinking of the summertime. And we actually met with the lake director and the directors of alley oop. So they're already talking about their camps and trying to get them, all of their kids in order and their ducks in a row so they can hit the ground running, hopefully, and they'll get some good news from the governor that they, that they, these kids could actually join the camps again. As I've been reporting, our playground is ready to go, it's been delivered, and we will be installing that when the weather gets better. Our streetscape, we have some final cleanup things we need to do there, and that phase will be hopefully done in the next couple of weeks. So we're just waiting for the contractor to get back to us on a couple of other issues. And we, hopefully, having a facilities meeting next week or the week after. That's it for me.
Great, thank you very much, and thank you for all your work. Councilman O'Toole, would you like to give your report?
Since our last meeting, the administration HR finance committee has met with the heads of police and fire departments, as Councilman O'Connell mentioned regarding their submitted budget worksheets. We like to say that all the low hanging fruit is gone, well, we're now pruning branches. So conversations that we had were very productive. We were able to get an idea of what the departments really need and what we can do without for the upcoming year. One thing that we are doing is seeking ways to defray the cost of some of these necessities. I've spoken with our grant writer and OEM director to try to identify grants that might be available for our emergency services communications equipment. We're currently in the process of implementing a new phone system, which will save some money, has the potential to save a whole lot of money. We got a couple of contracts that are just being buttoned up by Mr. Wiss, and we have our monthly committee budget meeting coming due, so I'll be sending an email out in the next couple of days to get that on the calendar. That's all I got, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Councilman Strauss, would you like to give your report?
Yes, and this time I'm actually ready. And I'm, you know, trying not to repeat myself from my last meeting, but you guys, being the last person at bat, and listening to all your reports, you're, you're all doing a fabulous job. I know you know it, and I'm never going to stop saying it. I do want to congratulate Mike Dillon, Mike, a police officer in town for many years. He so loved and adopted Allendale that he had to buy a house in Allendale. You know, we appreciate that kind of dedication. For those who can't afford to live in Allendale, a lot of people adopt Allendale, and I appreciate that. Volunteers from outside of Allendale come into Allendale to volunteer, which is kind of amazing. Mike is going to take over the OEM leadership position that Scott Zieber ran for so many years. In the passing of Scott, I miss him dearly, I'm sure his family does, and I wish them well. With regard to the DPW, you know, they're fortunately a, a well-oiled machine, you know, they're, they're filling potholes in, on Chestnut Street. They're, they're picking up the Christmas trees, they're, they're manning a recycling center on the weekends and, and, you know, doing all the hidden daily functions that keep our town running. So Mayor, I want to thank you for appointing me again to this position. When I started on the council eighteen years ago, Mayor Clumber appointed me to chair DPW. I got to work with George Higby, I got to work with Keith Kalenberg, two wonderful people. They had different ways of doing things, but they had a shared love of Allendale, and they found a way to keep this town running then. And I, and I appreciate that Ron Kistner, Dan Richards, you know, Lane, and, and all of the DPW people, everybody keeps it running. So I look forward to another year, I hope it doesn't snow too much so we can come in under budget again. And I do want to mention, Ari, before I close, that I reached out to Carlton Frost and Councilman O'Connell, and they are ready, willing, and able to be part of the reactivated green team, as is Mark Savistano, Mark is on the call tonight. So the four of us are the core of the group, and we're going to get started immediately on the Styrofoam. And Mark will discuss that during his public comment at the end of the meeting. So I will end my presentation then, now.
And Jim, yeah, thank you, and you touched on a lot of things, and you are, you are a wealth of information and inspiration at times. I mean, what, what you, what you have brought, what you've done, and what you continue to bring to this council just is beyond, and so I'm not, I don't want to go down that rabbit hole now, we'll save that for another time, but, but thank you. I'm going, I have time for my mayor's report. As Councilman O'Connell mentioned, COVID nineteen remains very much in the focus for two thousand and twenty one as it did in two thousand and twenty. The borough continues to monitor this ever-changing situation. We continue to hold our weekly meetings Tuesdays at five o'clock with OEM, police department, AVAC, cert, fire department, Board of Health, and the Public Safety Committee, including Councilman O'Connell, O'Toole, and Ron Kistner, to ensure that we are at the top of the, we are at the very top of this issue. We discuss numbers in Allendale, we discuss numbers in the county, we discuss numbers in the state, we discuss PPP, we discuss the vaccine, et cetera. As Jim mentioned, we are now led by Commissioner, Police Officer Matt, Mike Dillon, who's been doing a wonderful job, very happy to have him at, at the helm of that. The numbers in the state are holding steady, which, you know, you could look at it either way, we'd like it to go down, but it's not. They're, they're really, they're plateauing, which means new case, old cases are dropping off as new cases are coming in. Cannot overstate the importance of remaining vigilant, social distancing, mask wearing, hand washing, and all those precautionary procedures that we've been harping about since March, it's almost been a year. But they're still applicable, it's still out there, and, and the virus is still being spread. Borough Hall, we've been receiving inquiries regarding the COVID vaccine, and I want to take this opportunity to provide some information to hopefully answer questions and clear up some of the confusion. We understand absolutely that there's an eagerness to wanting to receive the vaccine, but you just have to exercise patience as the state and the county rolls this out. And we discuss this on Tuesdays, and we try to get the information out. It's out of our control, but to the extent that we can have, get the information assimilated and pass it on, we're going to do that. The state of New Jersey is in charge of the vaccine rollout, and they're collaborating with all of New Jersey's twenty one counties and certain hospitals to administer the vaccine. New Jersey has a phased plan with prioritized groups to receive, first to receive. Right now, in the one A category, those are the healthcare personnel, long-term care residents and staff, first responders, and individuals at high risk, including individuals age sixty five and older, and individuals age sixteen to sixty four with medical conditions as defined by the CDC are eligible to receive the vaccine. And that's the one A category. We're waiting for the timing for one B, we have not yet been advised. In order to receive, people call Borough Hall, I've received emails, in order to receive the vaccine, you must register online. We've put the links to all the sites on our COVID nineteen page on the website, so www.allendalenj.gov, you'll find our link, you'll find the link to register. There've been many reports of these sites not working properly, appointments not being available, confusion about eligibility and frustration that registration is only available online. That's the way it is, we can't change that. But what I have found, or what I've spoke, and spoke in speaking to people, for those that are trying to find a spot, to keep refreshing your page, and sometimes it says that nothing's available, but to refresh it again and again, and spots do open up. So if I can pass that on as advice, you know, I happily do. We understand the frustration. Our Board of Health has been reaching out to the state agencies to try to get answers and guidance to questions and issues that have come in. And as we receive updates from the state and the county, we will relay that information to you, the residents. Changing topic, the two thousand and twenty one garbage and recycling newsletter was recently delivered to every home. We've received positive feedback on the new style, and it was posted online, and all the dates have been loaded into the website's calendar as well as the Recycle Coach app. So if you don't have the Recycle Coach app, do it. I get an email, you know, each week, and it tells me when, when it is, and you can go to it and you can see. So that all, if you have questions, I strongly encourage you to download the app and register. Dogs and cats, reminder that all dogs and cats must be licensed for the year two thousand and twenty one. The deadline to register is Friday, January twenty ninth, to avoid the five dollar late fee, which goes into effect on February first. The clerk's office will be open this Saturday, January twenty third, from nine AM to twelve noon to process and issue pet licenses, and applications can be completed online through GovPilot. Allendalenj.gov, right? Okay, so you can go online, register, and then Saturday, the clerk's office to process and issue the licenses. Property taxes first quarter are due on two one, February first. You can drop your check in the secure mail slot at Borough Hall, postal mail, or pay online on the website. So that's February first for first quarter. And then the last part of my report is to the council members. As Councilman O'Toole had mentioned, we've been working on the budget, we started before January. And we've been meeting with department heads to discuss their budget, and Ron and I in Public Safety, we met with, this week? Police, it was this week, this, this week, this week hasn't ended yet, right? No. Police Department, the Fire Department, the Fire Inspector. So all council members either should have, or I spoke to Alyssa, should be obtaining the budget requests from their department heads. So please schedule a time to, schedule a meeting to go over your, the department heads that you're in charge of to go over their budget requests, so we can get those numbers back into Alyssa, so we can, for our next meeting with Councilman O'Toole. And that is it for my mayor's report. So I think we still have some more time, we have four minutes, right?
Yeah, I can be very brief, thank you, Mayor, since our last meeting, actually very busy period of time, working with Chief Sherb and the Police Committee on certain departmental matters, with Councilwoman Homan, as was mentioned, on some water utility matters, with Ron on some personnel matters. There are some contracts that have been alluded to, two twenty and two thirty, as Councilwoman Wosinski mentioned. A lot of the ancillary agreements to the purchase and sale agreement are now coming into focus since the land use board has issued its approval. We also have been involved in the negotiation process, and actually now coming to conclusion, the negotiations with both our PVA unit and our white collar unit. So maybe as soon as our next meeting, we may have contracts on the agenda for approval with the clerk's office, as I'm sure Michelle will say, an active period of time, again, with Oprah requests and the like. And two twenty and two thirty, apart from the contract matters, as Councilwoman Wosinski mentioned, working on the, the insurance claim with Allied World, and also, as I mentioned, certainly the other agreements. That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Michelle, would you like to give your report?
Thank you, just, it's a busy time in the clerk's office, and we're processing the pet licenses and doing everything to start the new year off, so that's it.
I know you don't want the praise, so pretend I'm not giving it to you, I'm looking right past you to someone else, but you, you and everyone else in your department has done a fantastic job. You wouldn't, you wouldn't believe that, you know, all the restrictions and limitations that we have in COVID and, you know, our staffing issues, you're just with, with amazement of what you've continued to do.
Well, thank you, but, you know, it's Tatiana and John deserve the credit too.
I know.
So thank you.
Yes, absolutely, thank you. Seven fifty eight, is Alyssa here, is she online? She went home, okay, but I had spoken to her before, and she wanted me to, to mention to the council members what I did about the department head, so that we're good there. Ron, would you like to give anything, any report?
Just real quick, Mayor, we are getting, at least in the winter stuff, the, and then last, next week's last of the Christmas tree pickup, that process. I want to thank the residents, they cooperated very well. Process went along very smoothly this year so far. We are preparing Crestwood Lake, the two pumps for the wells up top at the Red Barn, and we feel the, feel there are being, were removed, now being replaced with new pumps for the wells. The Chlorine Building has gotten a new, some work done rebuilding, which Rich McDowell is very happy. Rich is proud of work getting the lake ready, ready very diligently. And we are starting to work on some of the spring, summer projects. We get the lawnmower out, I put it out for cost and getting that repaired, we'll be ready to go for the spring and summer work.
Right, and, and, and other than that, it's been quiet, right?
Exactly, and, and Ron, thank you for filling in all the gaps of all the things that the DPW staff has been doing. I thank you.
You're welcome.
Great.
Thank you for your support. Thank you for your support.
Great. Perfect timing. Eight o'clock. So I would request a motion to adjourn the work session.
Still moved, Tommen.
Thank you. Second?
Second, Strouch.
Thank you, Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. All right. Sit tight. Time is eight o'clock. This is the January twenty-first, twenty twenty-one regular session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us via video and teleconference. Um, at this time, I ask that the public to pu- to please mute their devices, so it's not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be two opportunities during this meeting for the public to speak, and we will advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice requirements have been satisfied. Meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and have been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Great. Thank you. If you can all please rise to salute the flag.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Here.
Councilwoman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilwoman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso?
Here.
Councilman Strouch?
Here.
Councilwoman Wilsinski?
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein?
Here. Thank you, Michelle. Uh, public comment on agenda items only. So is there anyone in the public wishes to be heard on agenda items only?
Mayor, Mark Savistano. Is this a proper time to address the Styrofoam, or should I wait till the end of the meeting?
Um, I, I think it would be better at, at the end, so that it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone. Um, closing meeting to the public at this time. Uh, consent agenda, which I reviewed in the work session, so I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Still moved.
Thank you, Amy. Second?
Holman.
Thank you, Liz. Um, Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yeah.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wilsinski.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Um, any unfinished business? Not to my knowledge. Any new business? No. We did committee report. I did my report, Ray and Michelle, Ron, Lissa. So, uh, public comment. Um, so anyone wish to be heard on any matter? Mark, um, if you're still with us, and I see that you are now, would be the appropriate time if you'd like to, um, make a comment.
All right. Thank you. Yes, Mayor. Uh, and I was actually glad to hear Ron's voice there in the background. Because I would, um, greatly appreciate any input that Ron would have on this effort. Uh, his expertise and guidance would be very useful. I had sent out an email with a picture in it to Mr. Mayor and also to several of the councilman members, um, that showed the amount of Styrofoam that was collected i- in part in Fairlawn. And, uh, as I mentioned, the picture is worth a thousand words. What happened there, not only did, was it very successful, but also uh, filling three vehicles instead of just the one that they had intended. And, uh, with an hour and a half left in the drive, they had to turn over two hundred cars away because of the number of, of vehicles that responded, or households throughout Bergen County. And, uh, they just couldn't handle the amount of material that was collected. In Hillsdale, uh, the event that I had participated in as a volunteer, uh, that was also very successful. We completely filled the sixty-foot truck that was rented. And, um, a great participation from all of the surrounding communities as well. I have been in touch with recycling coordinators in Passaic County, Middlesex County, Sussex County, and I've reached out to, uh, Monmouth County and had very good conversations, uh, providing a lot of information that it's very successful everywhere it's been implemented. And, uh, they, uh, some of them have been suspended due to COVID, but they intend to continue with their collections. Uh, I've also continued to reach out to the surrounding municipalities, and, uh, additional information is, is forthcoming from them. Uh, I've been speaking with the Bergen County Hub representatives, Sustainable Jersey representatives. And, uh, I will be speaking at the upcoming, uh, BCUA, uh, open public meeting with regard to our efforts in the hopes of getting there, not only cooperation and guidance, but hopefully some funding to, uh, help our efforts to continue down the right path. Uh, and again, I want to thank you for, uh, uh, agreeing to hopefully re-initiate the Green Team, uh, all the efforts that Amy has done in the past to make it successful. And hopefully that will again help to move this effort forward. Uh, if there's any questions that any of the council members have on what we're doing, I'd be happy to answer them.
Now, I just would like to, uh, say congratulations on all the success with the Styrofoam. That's great news. Um, so I'm glad to see that everybody, not just in our community, but communities all around Bergen County are still continuing to recycle. So that's, that's encouraging uh, to hear that. So, um, and good luck with the Green Team. I'll pop in to say hi and see how you guys are doing.
Uh, it.
All good stuff.
But what we've established is the interest in our, our communities throughout Bergen County. Um, and that's the point that I want to bring to the, uh, BCUA. That clearly, once people become aware of the effort, they want to participate, and they're willing, at this point, to drive the material wherever it's being collected. So.
Yeah, and, and I know you know this too, but I think still the most important thing at this for everybody is to, we, we really have to stop using, you know, single-use plastics, and everybody has to be comfortable.
We do. We do. We do. Yes.
Water bottles, and make sure that you don't use plastic bags. Well, now that that's the state law, but.
Well, it's not in effect yet, though.
No, it's not. Yeah. So, anyway, but thanks. Thanks for doing that, Mark.
Pleasure. Thank you.
Yeah, and, um, I, uh, uh, attended the January second Styrofoam recycling event in Fairlawn. And it was a, a well-run operation. If anybody has been to any of the Bergen County uh, household hazardous waste, um, pickups or drop-offs at Camp Gau. Um, they followed a similar model, social distancing, you stay in your vehicle, teams come up and they take it out of your vehicle, you go on your merry way. It was a COVID-compliant way of removing Styrofoam from the landfill. And, um, the, the turnout, uh, as Mark indicated, far exceeded, uh, what anybody imagined. And I believe that this is gonna help catapult the county to start, um, locating Styrofoam condensing machines in various communities, um, so that this can be reduced to one thousandth the size of what Styrofoam is in its natural state. And that's the first part of the recycling process. But anyway, I will end there, and, uh, thank you again, Mark, and thank you again, Mayor Bernstein.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard? So, uh, I'm not, I think, Mr. Thomas, you're, you're muted. I, it, I'm not sure if you want to speak, but you're muted.
Uh, yes, I have a question.
Okay. So it, it, the, the floor is yours, or I don't know, but we can answer your question, but, uh, public comment, the floor is yours. State your name and address, please.
Uh, thank you. James Thomas, thirty Arlington Avenue in Allendale. I have, uh, I'd like to ask you if you would confirm for me the sequence and the procedure, and possibly the timeline with respect to our, our project at two-twenty, two-thirty. The planning board, the, uh, Land Use Board will memorialize the site plan of the applicant at their next meeting, I believe. Uh, following that, the next step would be the sale of the properties to, to Hampshire. And after that, then would be the subdivision by, the, the minor subdivision that they would have to make, uh, followed by construction. Is that the sequence of event as you see it?
Uh, that, that's my understanding. Yes.
Yeah. Then, uh, at what point will the ownership of the property of the new building and the property on which it sits, uh, return to Allendale?
So it's at that time, at, at the closing, um, we will be deeded back our, our new, newly created lot.
That, that will be after the completion of the.
After the building, right. Not necess- none, yeah. It, the closing hopefully will happen, um, in a couple of months. We haven't closed yet on the property. And after it's built, then we would get it deeded back.
It will come back at that time.
Yes, yes.
When, when in that procedure will the, uh, financial agreement, uh, or the, uh, well, I'll call it the financial agreement, when will that be finalized?
So I, I did mention that in my report in the beginning. Um, first of all, the Land Use Board memorialized the, um, resolution last night. And the financial agreement we are, uh, currently working on, and we're probably about ninety percent done. And that will be introduced hopefully in the next upcoming meetings, definitely probably not the next one, hopefully the one after that, because it is an ordinance, and it will need two readings. So I'm hoping within the next couple of meetings, we'll be introducing the, uh, financial agreements.
First quarter, first quarter of this year is probably a good working answer.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I thank you, but will that come before the sale of the property to Hampshire?
Yes, yes.
That ordinance, that ordinance will be passed. Very good. Thank, thank you very much.
Great. And, and Mr. Thomas, yeah, I, I don't know whether you were here, um, uh, during the work session, right? But at that time, Amy had commented that yesterday at the Land Use Board, uh, that the, the resolution was, was passed. So that was at yesterday's meeting.
Memorialization of the site plan was passed. Is that right?
Adoption of the resolution of approval. Adoption of the resolution of the approval.
Very good. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Anyone else from the public for any public comment? Okay, not seeing anyone. We'll close the meeting to the public. So if you, we now go into closed session. Um, so we're gonna go into closed session, but as I've said before, no formal action will be taken in closed session. And then when we come back, we're really just gonna come back and close out. So you can wait around if you'd like to, but there isn't, there won't be anything to, to really see or watch when we come back. So I would request, ask for a motion to approve Resolution twenty-one seventy-one, which authorizes the governing body to enter into closed session under attorney-client privilege. Uh, two-twenty, two-thirty, West Crescent Avenue, contract negotiations update.
Still moved.
Okay, second? So Amy, first, Jim, second. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yeah.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wilsinski.
Yes.
Great. So we're going to, um, I think we're going to close out here, and I'm gonna go into another link.
Yes.
Uh, Michelle had sent to everyone by email the link for closed session. Okay, so we're gonna close.
See you there.
Okay. Okay, time is now eight forty-four, and the regular session has resumed. I would request a motion to adjourn the regular session.
Still moved.
The second?
I'm open.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
All right.